I call the regular City Commission meeting of Tuesday, February 11, 2014 to order. May we stand for the Pledge of Belief?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amy, can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Foreman?
Here.
Commissioner Crisio?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Scott?
Here.
Mayor Metzger?
Here. Okay, the next item is the consideration of the following minutes: a public hearing and regular City Commission meeting held Tuesday, January 14, 2014, and the special City Commission meeting held Tuesday, January 28, 2014. Is there a motion to approve?
Mayor, I move the minutes of the public hearing and regular City Commission meeting held Tuesday, January 14, 2014, and the special City Commission meeting held Tuesday, January 28, 2014, be approved as recommended.
Is there support?
Support.
It's all support. Let me take a vote.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisio?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. The next item is consideration of the January 2014 disbursment report. Amy?
Payroll and accounts payable were provided to all of you prior to the meeting for the month of January. Payroll was $52,361.96. Accounts payable was $715,960.80, of which $418,562.47 were in tax liabilities.
Are there any questions? Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Your Honor, I move that the January disbursment report be approved as listed.
Is there support?
A second.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisio?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. Now we get something more fun. The next item is consideration of the resolution in recognition of former Ferndale Public School Board member W. Charles Chuck Moser. Amy, could you read the resolution?
Sure. Resolution in recognition of W. Charles Chuck Moser for the service to the Ferndale Public Schools Board of Education, whereas Mr. Moser served the Ferndale Public School Board of Education from 1992 to 2013, and has been a resident of the city of Pleasant Ridge for over 20 years. And whereas Mr. Moser was elected to serve on the Ferndale School Board of Education in 1992, and his service has included serving on the following committees: Policy, Staff Relations, Building Insight, Finance, and Special Programs; and serving as a district liaison to the Oakland County Legislative Committee and the Oakland County School Boards Association. He was Board President from 1999 to 2011. And whereas Mr. Moser has been dedicated at the Ferndale Public Schools throughout his life, not only as a graduate of the Ferndale High School, but also as a parent of three Ferndale High School graduates whose experiences in the district provided a solid foundation for their college and professional successes. And whereas Mr. Moser has also served the school community through participation in many activities demonstrating his commitment and love of the schools. He has been a longtime volunteer for the theater and musical theater programs, serving as co-construction head, and has served as a member of the Ferndale Education Foundation Board of Trustees, enthusiastically promoting the special events and fundraisers. He has also served on the PTA, Eagles pledge, Band and Orchestra boosters, Athletic boosters, and Musical boosters, always finding a way to promote and champion the Ferndale Public Schools in the paths of delight. And now therefore be it resolved that the city of Pleasant Ridge City Commission does hereby recognize and pay tribute to the service of W. Charles Chuck Moser.
I am delighted to be here. Did you ever hold a job when you were doing all these things?
No, but I was also treasurer of the Pleasant Ridge School where you've been.
Throw that in there, too. Well, here, here you go. Resolution.
I appreciate that.
We certainly appreciate that. Did I hear you're going north?
Well, eventually.
Eventually.
But right now, we're staying here for at least a couple, three, four months.
I remember all the work you did on the theater, with our kids and everything. That was great.
It was wonderful. Well, thank you again. Appreciate that.
Thank you. You gonna make a statement?
I want to say a couple just quick words. I just want to thank my mother-in-law, who is going to be 91 this month. My wife, she came as my representative of my family. My kids are all grown and gone, and they're all over the place. They're in Texas, and they're in England, and they're in Washington, D.C., and they've done great things with education. And my son also worked for the Recreation Department, so he did that for several years. So we've been involved a lot in the city, a lot in some of the auction activities, and obviously a lot with the school boards.
You have great places to visit.
We have great places to come visit. I've always said, enjoy what you do, go live wherever you want, and we'll come visit. But again, thank you to the whole Commission, to the mayor, to the city itself for allowing me to do this, and for voting me in continually. So I appreciate that.
Thanks for all your service. It's amazing.
I would normally stay.
That's all right.
But I think I'm gonna take my mother-in-law home. Thank you again.
Oh, I have to make a motion. I'm so prepared.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll stand here and make more.
Is there a motion to support the resolution?
Your Honor, I move the resolution in recognition of former Ferndale Public School Board member W. Charles Chuck Moser be approved as recommended.
Is there support?
Second.
May we have a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisio?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Now you may leave. Motion carries.
I want to say one quick thing. I just want to thank you, because you always made me feel welcomed to all of the school board meetings as I was trying to figure out all of the things that were going on. But also, you always asked good questions about, you know, back to me, and I always appreciated that very much. Thank you.
Thank you. We've worked a lot with Kurt over the years, and now Jay's our new liaison, so we appreciate that, too.
Yeah, it's fun.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
And thank you to your mother-in-law for coming. All right. The next item on the agenda is Public Discussions: Items Not on the Agenda. Well, here we go. We look forward to this.
Yeah. Oh, I can. Thank you. Rob Sankett, Fairwood, Fairwood, Rob.
There you go.
I just want to say thank you to Scott as acting city manager. We had an issue recently come up, and he was on it, luckily split. If anybody wants to do an FOI and find out why, O-I-A, yep, go ahead. Thank you very much. It was really good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just, I wanted to add that, you know, I had asked if you would copy the commissioners, just because I find that it's very helpful for us to also know when people have issues and they want to let the city manager know about those issues. It's always helpful for us to also know so that when people come to us, and Scott is very busy, and so, you know.
He was very good and very quick. The thing that would be helpful is if on the website they had the commissioners' email addresses, because I don't think many people might know them, because I certainly didn't know them all. So that would have been helpful to screenboard it, so, thank you.
We'll get that.
You got it.
Thanks a lot, Rob. Any of these other ones?
Well, no, you're good. Well, you're good. I'm going to say something to her dancing. No. We had a little joke ahead of time. We have Jane McCoskey, 110 Elm Park, and this is kind of a second to the previous remark. In the last Thursday, I emailed Scott and wanted to know, one of my neighbors had said, "Jane, the street light's out. Why don't you take care of that?" So I thought, all right. I contacted Scott and asked, "Is it DTE or who do I call?" Next day, it was fixed, and I have happy neighbors. So our little community is doing very well, and I thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
I feel more secure now with Scott.
You didn't need a ladder.
They brought a big truck and the whole thing.
Well, it was interesting. After we were sworn in, my wife and I did a tour of Pleasant Ridge, looking at lights. Found two lights out on Sylvan, our street, and none out, none other ones. So Scott took care of them.
Well, it happened.
It's a good thing. Anything else from the public? Okay, close public discussion. The next item on the agenda is consideration of the following consent agenda: the resolution in honor of Presidents' Day, Monday, February 17, 2014, and the proclamation recognized in February as Black History Month. I would just think, Amy, anything to add on that? Anybody want to add anything?
No, these are just routine items that are put on the consent agenda for City Commission consideration.
Okay then. Is there a motion for approval?
Mayor, I move the consent agenda to be approved as recommended.
Okay, is there support?
Support.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisio?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, the next item is consideration of the City Commission Liaison Report, and we'll start with the Historical Commission, and let me start.
Yes, just a couple of quick ones for the Historical Commission. It was a good discussion this month about the Home Tour. I believe the date is June 7, and so they're actively looking for households to participate in the Home Tour. If you are considering it, feel free to contact me or any of the members of the Historical Commission, and we'll get you in touch with what we're doing. And then also, there's some improvements to one of our historical landmarks that's underway, or at least we're planning to do some interior improvements on one of the benches, actually creating a new bench in a space that's empty right now, and we're also looking at some other improvements to the property. Those are the two big items for the discussion. We may postpone, we may continue to do the lecture series that has been considered, but we're still working out the details of that. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Planning Commission, Downtown Development Authority.
Yes. The, well, one of the things with the Downtown Development Authority is actually doing a really exciting new, has a new committee, and they are developing a Business and Marketing Development Committee, and this is going to work with the, to develop and implement marketing initiatives for our businesses in our downtown. And it will have activities to help increase awareness to the communities of the different businesses that are there, so that we will be able to help support and, you know, build more success for our own businesses. So, you know, and one of the really nice things that's happened on top of that already is Scott and Bridget helped work with the DDA and got the Pleasant Ridge Downtown Business Directory put into the RIDGER, this current RIDGER that's out, on page six. And it has phone numbers for everybody and websites for the businesses that have them as well. I think this should be really fun, because it makes us more aware of what businesses we do have and all the different services that are downtown. The DDA, let's see, oh, the Planning Commission, then, has also been working quite a bit on the master plan. We talked about last month the visioning session, and it had, you know, a great turnout, and really, it was, you know, the input was really interesting and exciting from all the residents. And now you can see the results of this visioning session online. Go to theridger.org, and those results are there. And so it's a very, it's, you know, just really interesting, you know. So now the committee, the master plan committee is working on taking that information that they've gathered from the visioning session and working it into the new master plan. The Planning Commission is also working on, they're going to, they're starting to study the Bus Rapid Transit study, Woodward, I'm sorry, the Bus Rapid Transit that's going to happen on Woodward, and they're going to figure out, you know, really study and figure out their recommendations and what they would like to see, you know, placement of where the dedicated lanes would go, as well as other things that would make it more compatible for our neighborhood, including connections, you know, better walkability and bikeability to the different stations and things like that, and how this can all work together to make our city more, you know, more pedestrian-friendly and bike-friendly. And then, trying to think of one other thing. I think with the, then with the Bus Rapid Transit from just the Transit Committee, one of the things that's happening with that is they are getting pretty close to turning it over to more of an engineering level, and our area is one of the most complicated. So they do not have answers for us of exactly how it's going to affect our community, if it's going to be inside lane running or outer lane running, and how it's really going to cross 696, and how we are going to cross as pedestrians or whatever 696, but they're looking at that. You know, there are a couple possible alternates that they're looking at on top of that, is possibly having a second route that's going to go just downtown Royal Oak to begin and end, and go downtown to, you know, it'll end somewhere downtown near the river. And then also, they're really working on the intermingling with the M1 rail, which will go from Grand Boulevard down to the river. And so it's all of these different moving parts right now, that it's still going to take a little bit of time, like the Regional Transit Authority is still being very much, you know, it has a long way to go still as it's being developed. And the funding for all of these projects is a little bit, a little ways off, but I think there are a lot of communities that want to help work to make it not only a Woodward initiative, but then move forward on making it an M-59 and grass it in Michigan Avenue, too. So it's pretty exciting. And that's it.
That's great. I'm glad there's more discussion around public transit, because in the visioning session we found that although people definitely want to keep, maintain the community character and they want financial stability, it was that whole Woodward corridor, and what's going to happen to Woodward corridor, and how that's going to affect us, how we're going to do the walkability, the complete streets, the Bus Rapid Transit, and everything else was really a critical piece, and it's going to be extremely critical for Pleasant Ridge. We were at the Michigan Municipal League Training Conference over the weekend, and the head of the Michigan Municipal League was talking about the development, the demographics, the change that's going on in this area, and said that Pleasant Ridge is right in the middle for a 20-to-30-year extremely good future, and that we're right in the middle of all this change, and we need to be part of it, and it's great that the Planning Commission is getting very much, much more active about it, much more interested. And it's going to be, we've got to keep watching, but it's going to be very interesting for Pleasant Ridge going forward. So we'll talk a little bit later.
One thing on the transit that Anna was talking about is that we've really seemed to have picked up some lads and some movement on this, and I think people are starting to get excited, and I, the funding mechanism in the long run for this is going to be the RTA, which would be the Regional Transit Authority. And the bad news about that is that it doesn't look like anything will get on the ballot for the Regional Transit Authority until 2016, because they can't put it, it has to go on a year where there's a state election, which isn't even here, and they're not going to be able to get it in for 2014. So I don't want this, I want people to stay excited about it, knowing that this is a little bit ways off, and it's, you know, I don't want, at the same time, I don't want people to think we're going to have a bus line running down Woodward next year because of all the exciting talk and all the things that we're moving forward on. But just remember, when that vote does come, it's three or four counties.
Four counties.
Four counties that are going to be involved, and that's going to be one of the challenges, too, because the counties might not see an effect right away.
Right.
If they approve it, where, you know, they're focusing on Oakland right now, Macomb, and Wayne County. So we really want to keep, keep things on the up and up, and really keep the excitement going for this as we move into this RTA discussion. So I think it's, I think it's a good way to go.
Yeah, and I think even though the vote for RTA, for funding for the transit probably won't happen until 2016, the good thing is, there's so much work that needs to be done. It's even, honestly, if we had had the ballot votes this year, it's still several years off.
Yep.
So they can still keep working and getting intermittent funding from the federal and state government to help with some of this as we keep moving forward, and, like you're saying, help encompass and help these other counties vision it as well, because that's...
Yeah, I mean, that's the thing. The vote this time is very different from what we had for SMART funding or anything like that. There's no opt-out. All four counties vote at one time, and it has to be more, one more yes than no. And it's not by community, it's four county total. And so you've really got to get a message out there, and you can't just have a Woodward line, and Macomb, and Wayne, and Washington are going to jump on it. So there's got to have, they've got to start planning some of the other pieces. So now, if they could just get SMART and DDoD together, that would be, they could do, there's a lot that they could do in the meantime, so. All right, you've been waiting, haven't you? Next, we'll go to the Recreation Commission with Commissioner Crisio.
Thank you, Mayor. It's the review of our January meeting. We had some housekeeping. We reappointed Jaclyn Scully as our chairperson, and we appointed Sue Turpac as the secretary of the Recreation Commission. We also did some re-ups for Diana, Amanda, and Sue, and we welcome a new member, Miss Jean Russell, who's with us this evening, and will be addressing her appointment on Agenda Item 18. But overall, it was a great meeting. One of the things we discussed was the scheduling for the upcoming year. We wanted to ask the residents of the community if they had any ideas. We bounced around some ideas as far as adult events, some kid events, some senior events. But if you have any ideas for an event that you would think was good fun and something that the community would enjoy, please send us an email through Scott or attend our next recreation meeting, which is always the last Wednesday of the month at 7:00 p.m. at the Community Center. And we'd love to take your input on ways that we can add to an already exciting recreation schedule. Speaking about scheduling, we have a few items coming up. The Daddy Daughter Dance is Friday, February 21 at 6:30 p.m., and all those daddies out there can make their reservations at the Community Center, or mommy can make their reservation, which is probably more likely, but it's always, I've been to a few of those with my daughter, and they're memory-making opportunities. So I highly recommend all those daddies out there, put their dancing shoes on and come out and dance. We also have the 50-plus club is having a trip on Friday, February 28 to the Parade Company downtown. This will be an afternoon adventure for that club. It'll be a tour of the facilities. Scott, is there a lunch, or?
I'm not 100% sure on that. An item that Bridget had organized with some of the people that took the last trip, they were interested in going down there, so I can, I can find out, and we're going to put it out the next Eve lesson.
Okay.
What's the date?
What's the date? I'm sorry.
It's Friday, February 28, and we'll be departing Pleasant Ridge around 11:30. So please sign up for that if you're interested. There is a fee for that, it'll be $15 per person. Another 50-plus club is the Euchre Tournament, and that'll be in March, Thursday, March 20, and that's a free event, and that sounds like a lot of fun. And then further down the line, we'll have our Pancake Brunch and Easter Egg Hunt is scheduled for Saturday, April 12 at the Community Center with a 10:00 a.m. brunch and 11:30 egg hunt for kids of all ages. Another reminder for those parents out there, soccer registration is open right now for the spring season, and the deadline is coming up, it'll be March 1. So if you have young ones who are interested in playing soccer this spring, please be aware the deadline is coming up. I know we really want to urge parents, if they can, to get their name in there so we can get a good, good number on how many jerseys and balls and all that good stuff. So again, that deadline is March 1. And another invitation is to check out the Wellness Center. We have some new cardio equipment, new treadmills, ellipticals, and bikes, and a new climb mill, stair climber. That sounds intense.
Man, it is intense. You gotta come and check it out.
Okay.
It's something else.
All right, so make sure we jump on the climb mill.
Is the TV not hooked up, because there's no way you could focus on that TV if you were doing that?
It's, they actually, the machine ends up being so high up that they had to, they ordered an extension post for the television, and they had to order a second extension post, because it does end up being a high machine, because it's like a little escalator. It's not like the old stair climbers, where you remember the chains, and it's, it looks like a little escalator. We demoed one a few months ago, and we had great reviews on it, we had a computer out there for people to be able to take a survey, and I remember the one gentleman went on there, and he went on there for about 15 minutes, and he came in the next day, and he was barely walking. It's like, that was too much, because it's just something you don't need to do for a long time, and it works you out. It's a great workout, so we definitely want people to come and check it out.
Yeah. All right, well, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Could I ask, just so I can feel a little bit warmer, when does the pool open?
The pool opens, I believe it's May 23.
That's what I was hoping.
So it's, it's the earliest possible date that we could open, because Memorial Day is the earliest it can be on the calendar, so.
I'm hoping it snowmelt by then.
Right. Depending on the 12th.
Might have a polar bear club.
I know, whatever it takes. I'll be there in a chair. The next Ferndale Public Schools Committee Liaison with Commissioner Foreman.
Yes, I'd like to start by saying to everyone, I recommend that you brace yourself, because this is going to be an extra-long report. School Board member Karen Toomey couldn't be here tonight, because the school board has a special meeting themselves, so I'm going to deliver some of her updates. First off, as you may have heard, the All-City Extravaganza that was to take place on January 25 was canceled due to inclement weather. However, that was rescheduled for this past weekend, and the concerts did take place, so that at least was a success, because we had a good turnout there. Also, this past weekend on Sunday, I was honored to speak at the Ferndale PTA Volunteers' Night, where many volunteers throughout the district were recognized for their hard work throughout the year. It was hosted by RIDGER's Stacy Budzik, Barb Landry, and Nathan Schoenfeldt. There was also a raffle with some interesting prizes. Despite another volunteer winning it, Barb Landry somehow ended up going home with a fantastic rug. You'll have to ask her about that. Some other notable news, a new committee has been formed by the school board. This committee is called the External Relations Committee. I attended the kickoff meeting on February 3, and I have a few updates to share regarding that. First, the purpose of the committee is outlined in three points. We developed a mission statement. The first point is to base state funding for education on an accurate assessment of the cost to provide a satisfactory education to each student, accounting for different ages, different locations, and different learning styles and needs. Number two, restore Michigan's education system to its past success by developing a long-term plan to reverse the last decade's cuts in the money available for classroom teaching. And third and finally, maintain the integrity of K-12 funding by ensuring that no new demands are made of the fund without providing matching revenue sources for the fund. This is because the state is looking at adding additional programs that will be funded by the money that's currently going to K-12, which would divert money away from those K-12 grades. So they're looking to advocate for additional funding to support those additional programs. Second, this is important, we just developed this today, actually, so this is hot off the presses. Tuesday, February 18 at 7:00 p.m., For Ridge. Ferndale Board of Education member Kevin Deegan Kraus will be making a presentation around school funding with a Q&amp;A session afterward. I asked him for a description of this, because I know he has very specific words that he likes to use for things. So here's what he gave me. "Is school funding up? Is it down? Michigan's school funding system is shockingly complicated. Without a solid understanding of how we actually pay for schools, it is hard to make sense of the contradictory numbers we're hearing every day. Using state and local budget data, Kevin will provide a basic, nonpartisan framework for understanding how we fund our schools, how much money they get, and where it comes from. This applies to all school districts throughout Michigan, not just Ferndale schools, so it should be of interest to any parent that has children or has had children in the past or is just interested in school goings-on."
What's the date on that, Jay?
That's February 18 at 7:00 p.m. So I think this will be very interesting. I did have a question for Scott regarding this, though. Would it be possible for us to use a toddler room? Is it outfitted yet for any parents that might come with children?
Yeah, they'll be able to come, and we do have a number of toys in, and then we're getting more in every day, so it will be, that'll be available.
Okay, I think we'll be able to manage some volunteers to staff that from the school. Okay, now, the third point I would make regarding the External Relations Committee, this is also important. Wednesday, February 19, will be a trip to Lansing to advocate for fair funding for schools. Really, we could use everybody going to this initial part at least, which would be 8:00 a.m. for a group picture to show solidarity for the effort. And this will take place at Ferndale High School, again, 8:00 a.m. on the 19th. A number of us will be there, School Board members, families, basically anyone that wants to help restore funding to schools. Just by showing to take a picture with the group, you can show your support. Of course, if you can make the trip to Lansing, all the better. So a quick rundown of that day. 8:00 AM, meet at Ferndale High School for the photo. 8:30, drive to Lansing. Again, optional. 10:00, take a group photo in Lansing on arrival. 10:30, attend a meeting of the Education Committee. At noon, the group will be joined for lunch by Representative Ellen Cogan Lipton, Senator Vincent Gregory, and Representative Brandon Dillon in Representative Tim Grimald's office for lunch. Then at 1:30, the group will attend a House session. 2:00, a small focus group will attend a meeting in the Governor's Office. 3:00, Representative Kurtz, Chair of Family, Children, and Seniors. There'll be a meeting with him. And finally, 4:30, Senator Pavlov, the Senate Education Chair. He'll host a meeting as well. Again, the key point here is that you don't have to go to Lansing. If you want to participate, you could show up just for a photo. That would be important in the media. For the activities in Lansing, if you do choose to go, you don't have to attend all these different activities. You could always just go to museums afterward after taking a photo there. So Karen Twomey asked me to provide her information for contact if anyone has questions. It's ktomey, T-W-O-M-E-Y, at ferndalschools.org. And her cell phone, 248-417-2721.
Say that again, please.
And now I have just a little bit more. This is a summary of the activities between now and our next City Commission meeting that I'd like to run through real quick. Tomorrow is a very important day for schools. It's Count Day. So families, please make sure your child is there. Every day is important in the school, but tomorrow is especially important just for the count. Also tomorrow morning, tours for potential incoming families will take place at three schools. Roosevelt at 8:30, Coolidge 9:30, and JFK at 10:00 AM. February 13th, there are a couple of school fundraisers taking place around town from some wonderful businesses. We have Olga's on Woodward. They're donating a portion of their proceeds for that day's sales to the schools. This would be going to the Ferndale Education Foundation. Dino's in Ferndale that day is raising money for the boys' swim team from 4:00 to 10:00 PM. The week of February 17th, and this is finally the most exciting part of the winter. We're gonna get a day off school, if you can believe that. We haven't had too many of those. A mid-winter break starts that way. So the full week of break. We don't need snow for it. Yeah, we're gonna get a little bit of a break. So during the break, again, two items I mentioned. February 18th, that's the presentation at Four Ridge from Kevin Deegan Kraus. The 19th is a trip to Lansing. 24th, unfortunately, classes have to resume sometime, as long as we don't have snow that day. And there will also be a School Board meeting that night at Harding Administration Building. February 25th, for anyone that missed their opportunity to donate blood in January, Volunteer Blood Donor Month, there'll be a Red Cross Blood Drive at Ferndale High School. 26th, more parent tours at JFK, Roosevelt, and Coolidge, for anyone who's interested. 28th, Middle School Band and Orchestra Festival. And coming up in March, we have School Board President Jim O'Donnell. He'll be in town discussing the state of the district. The date is to be announced for March. However, there are some dates for Ferndale and Royal Township, if any would like to attend those. But we will have a Pleasant Ridge Day as well. Last but not least, March 6th, 7:00 PM, Ferndale Middle School Dance Concert. Of course, you can always get more information on the Ferndale Schools website, ferndalschools.org. That's it for me.
Sure.
That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Any other? Okay. The next item on the agenda is consideration of the governmental reports. Our government is gone.
I apologize.
I don't see we have no schools, no fire chief, no county commissioner. Okay, I guess that's it for the government reports. The next item is consideration of supplemental appropriation number A-2014-001. Scott?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is more of a housekeeping item for the City Commission. We'll do usually two or three supplemental appropriations for the budget per year so we can balance some of the lines of the line items of the budget that are either over or under and be able to help us in our budgeting processes as we go through. Part of this is dictated by state law. We have to have a balanced budget. So this helps us get to that point and prepare. So this is the first one that we are doing for the 2013-2014 budget. And some of the main highlights of the appropriation are to relocate the payout money that went to the former city manager out of the salary line item into line items, so we can keep track of what that dollar amount was. The dollar amount to renovate the teen toddler rooms at the Community Center for some carpet replacement at City Hall for some computers and technology upgrades after we had some crashes for computers and some issues. And just some other housekeeping-type items that are included in that. So my recommendation is that we approve that supplemental appropriation.
Any questions, Scott? Is there a motion to approve?
Mayor, I move the supplemental appropriations number, supplemental approche-
Easy for you.
Appropriation A-2014-001. Be approved as recommended.
Is there support?
I support.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Crzyjak?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item is consideration of the inter-local agreement between the City of Pleasant Ridge and the County of Oakland for ballot layout and programming services. Scott?
Yes, this is another item that has to come before the City Commission. We used County of Oakland along with, I believe, most of the cities in Oakland County to code the election cards, the electronic cards that go on the ballot machines, and to actually print our ballots. We get a better price on printing and that way the county's responsible for that. And if we have any issues with the card coding, we can call them and go through. So they just need an inter-local governmental agreement to be able to do that. So I recommend approval.
Is there a motion to approve?
Your Honor, I move that the agreement with the County of Oakland for ballot layout and programming services, effective for a period of five years, be approved. That the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the agreement.
Is there support?
I second.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Crzyjak?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries.
Can I ask a quick question? Now, are there any, so that doesn't change anything? It's just extending the contract?
Correct. It's just one of those, they have five-year limitations on them. So it's just one that comes up and we go through the process. It's a much program that the county offers us and we get good pricing and lots of success.
It's not changing what kind of voting machines?
No, no, no. Oh, gosh, no. We don't want to go through that again. Everything will stay the same as far as that goes.
Wonderful. Okay, sorry. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is consideration of the appointments to the City of Pleasant Ridge Citizens Advisory Committee, the CAC. It's not CAC. We don't say CAC. It's just Citizens Advisory Committee. Just, I just wanted to make a couple introductory comments and then hand it over to Scott. I just wanted to say, we had an outpouring of interest. I just want to thank the residents of Pleasant Ridge. Forty-nine people came forward for a 15-member committee. And unfortunately, three people had to drop out once the schedule of meetings was put out there and they didn't feel that they could adequately meet that timeline. So they chose to pull themselves out. So we had 46 people from which we chose. And just to let you know, all streets but four were represented in that. We did not hear from Hanover, Maywood, Millington, or Woodside. So just so you know, but we had people from every other street, including Ridge. And it was quite a great distribution of people, east and west, male and female. We did a lot of demographic analysis. So it was terrific and we really do appreciate all the interest and especially for what I feel is an extremely important effort. I did want to, one other thing before we, there seems to be, there's been some discussion. I want to make clear what the mission of this committee is. This is not a headly override committee, so let me just put that out front. And I'll read the mission, just so we're real clear. "The Pleasant Ridge Mayor and City Commission have established a Citizens Advisory Committee to assist them with conducting a thorough review of the city's financial position. The 15-member CAC will examine the city's current and future revenues and expenses, past cost-cutting efforts, and future spending needs. Once this has been accomplished, the CAC will make recommendations as to whether a headly override proposal should be put before the voters or which areas or services should be reduced or both." So we, obviously, the next year's budget will be done without any headly consideration at all. And we want people to actually understand the budget and everything and work with us to determine. Do we want to do it? Can we live within our means? What are our wants? What are our needs? And really break this down. So I just want to make that point. This is not a headly override committee. It is a budget. And we'll hear much more from Scott and John Zech going forward. So, Scott?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you. Well, you made a nice introduction there. It'll shorten my speed here. Thank you. So this discussion has been going on at the City Commission level since December and we put out a call for applications and it was, like the mayor said, it was a great turnout. Forty-nine applications and 46 ended up being considered by the City Commission. We made a couple of large pushes to make sure that all residents knew that it was out there, you know, in E-Blast, the Ridger, signs throughout the city. So like I said, I think it shows that we did a nice job on that. As the discussion at the City Commission level and administration started to formulate about what the group was gonna do and what we were really looking for them to do, it was decided that we would want to look at an outside consultant to kind of facilitate the group and help look at it. And part of that is, was something that I recommended too because if I was to sit in there and facilitate that group and we're going over a budget document that, you know, I'm pretty familiar with, you know, emotionally, I put a lot of the document together and as people would start to tear it up or look at it, I wouldn't want to say, oh, no, 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 no. I didn't want that influence on the group. The influence of the administration will be really to give information to the group. And it just, when it all said and done, this, we'll be looking at numbers. And I said to a gentleman today that was asking some questions about what the millage rate was in 1986, believe it or not, that I said, what it all comes down to is that they're numbers and no matter what country you're in, numbers are numbers. So we're gonna be able to present those numbers to the group and with help of the facilitator. So the City Commission had the administration reach out to Mr. John Zech, who originally was a top choice for the interim city manager but was unable to be able to fulfill that role because of some personal things that had come up. So we thought that this might be a nice way to still involve Mr. Zech in looking at some of the finances and budget and facilitating this committee. So the administration and the city entered into a contract with Mr. Zech to facilitate the group. And he is here with us tonight. And I'm happy, actually, I'm going to introduce him to all the residents right now and then I'll let you get up and say a few things, John, and then we can continue with how the selection process took place. But, John, if you want to say a few things, welcome.
Thank you very much, Scott.
You can face, you can put your back to us. It's okay.
It's my, I don't know which side's my best side.
We'll let you know.
Thank you very much, Scott, again, for the kind introduction and to the mayor and the City Commission for asking me to assist in this regard. I'll be brief. I'm looking forward to working with the city and with the commission, with the staff, as well as with the 15 that are gonna be selected tonight. And I believe there's still gonna be two alternates perhaps and if somebody has to drop out. I have had the pleasure of working in municipal government for over 35 years, both in Michigan as well as in Ohio. I was the city manager for 18 of those 35-plus years for the city of Wayne. I live in Wayne still and so coming out here is a treat because I like to come to Oakland County to do fun things. And so this is a lot of fun for myself as well as for my wife. But I'm anxious to get started on Thursday. I look forward to being a facilitator, not to telling you what to do. You will tell the City Commission what you think they should do. And I will try to help you frame that and put that in a context that they can work with it as well as evaluate it and decide what's in the best interest of this very fine city. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John, would you mind sharing quickly your three-stage process that you're planning to use just for the residents' benefit?
I look at a project like this as, as I told the City Commission, three stages. The first stage is to share a lot of information with the Citizen Advisory Committee. The budget, audits, other documents that will help them understand the finances of the city. What is its debt? What are its revenue sources? What kind of expenses does it face? What kind of long-term contracts does it have? Working relationships with, like, Sacra and others. So get everybody as much information as we can give to them. If they have things that they would like that we haven't thought of, get that information out there and share it with the whole group. And then, once that information is there, they had a chance to think about it, review it, then start drilling down into it and digging in and really understanding those reams of paper and other things that the city will be putting together so that you can intelligently speak to the commission about what you think they should do. Should they spend this money? Should they not spend the money? Should they save this money? Should they put it over here, put it over there? So that's the middle part, is to really drill down and get a complete understanding of the finances of the city. And then the third part would be to reduce to writing your recommendations for the City Commission to consider and get those to the commission in a timely way so that they can have time to review them, think about them, perhaps challenge the commission, the committee, to spell them out further and so that they can be incorporated into their thinking over the next six, 12, 18 months. And that would really be a useful product, much like the master plan that's being worked on now. And I believe you've worked on a DEA plan, a recreation plan. But this would really be a useful plan for the mayor and the commission over the next months to consider as far as what they should do in terms of their financial situation.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
Okay, so as we had a meeting with Mr. Zech and, you know, we were talking about some of these things, the deadline came up for the applications, which was February 3rd, that they closed the business. So we, the administration compiled all those results. We sent them out to the City Commission and the City Commission held a workshop to discuss the selection of the 15 people. So there was input from Mr. Zech, myself, and the City Commission about how the makeup of the group was gonna be. And it was a good discussion. I mean, we talked about it for some time.
And you might want to say how the original list, you know, that each one of us did are separate?
Right. So everybody had all the applications and they were able to look through them, read over them, and really study them for a number of weeks as we were giving them to the commission on a weekly basis as they came in. So at that point, when they, on the 3rd, I compiled all of those and we put it into like a Survey Monkey-type thing where we sent each commissioner an individual link so they were able to go in and rank their top 15 people. And then I was the only person who saw those results. So we compiled those for the workshop and were able to come up with a type of a ranking that each commissioner used in a number system where we were able to narrow down the field. So that worked out nice and was able to kind of move the process along. So we weren't having to talk about each of the 46 individuals, you know, on a name-by-name basis. But we were able to go through and find out what the consensus of the group was looking for. And I think it worked out really nice that way. And then we were able to break it down from there and talk about each person that was in that list. So here we are tonight to officially appoint the members and the administration has a recommendation of the 15 people and the two alternates that we talked about. And then also the next item to appoint the City Commission Liaison. So I was gonna, I was gonna read the names that were the recommendations of the administration. And again, we do appreciate all of the 49 applicants that we had. And unfortunately, not everybody can be picked for something like this, but we hope to be able to keep their name in the file for future volunteer-type opportunities and hope that you want to be involved in the City of Pleasant Ridge.
Well, we know the foundation will be looking for a lot of help and a lot of, plenty of other opportunities.
Whether or not it's this committee, we have, you know, a number of junior commissions and other items that we're always looking to fill.
And as well, the meetings will be public meetings, so you can always attend and get the information. As well as the information will be available online. Scott has said- Scott has set up a tab on the homepage already, so you can start accessing information already.
Right now, yep. There's a lot of information up there already. So all of our agendas and all of our presentations will also be put up there. So everything will be available for people to see. So at this point, the recommendations for the fifteen members are Sharon Barrett, David Carmani, Jake Culver, Marie Hayner-Patty, Jeff Hand, Elaine Hemmy, Thomas Letts, Mike Lindberg, Jane McColsky, Kristy McAuliffe, Kylie Newman, Peter Stenger, Leah Summers, Tom Troyer, and Cindy Wilcox. And then the two alternates that were chosen or recommended are Mr. John Eyre and Joe Egley. So that's the recommendation after our workshop from the administration. And I approve, I recommend that we approve those numbers.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. Is there a motion to approve these appointments?
Mayor, I move the appointments of the previously mentioned red list by Scott. Of the City of Pleasant Ridge Citizens Advisory Committee be approved as recommended. Further, that the appointment of Mr. Eyre and Mr. Egley as alternate members of the committee be approved as recommended.
Is there support?
I support.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuziak?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes.
Motion carries. I just want to congratulate the fifteen plus two. And we look forward to seeing you on the thirteenth. And again, as Commissioner Perry said, the meetings are open to the public. Anybody can come and listen. We will be, the members of the committee will be sitting in a U shape, right, with John and Scott taking the lead. But everybody else is invited to be in Four Ridge. And so there'll be plenty of room. And we invite people to be there. They can't interact necessarily, but they can certainly soak in the information and then talk with the committee members between meetings. So they will be meeting initially on the thirteenth for introductions and to get their agendas going forward and their tasks and some homework right off the bat. And then we'll be meeting every two weeks. So it'll be the second and fourth Thursdays of each month, at least through May, most likely. So it should be a good effort. Looking forward to it.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. The February thirteenth meeting, just to confirm, is that at Four Ridge at 7:00 P.M.?
Four Ridge at 7:00 P.M. Yes.
Just something real quick on that. So the members that were officially appointed tonight will receive an email tonight kind of laying out that they were selected. And there's a number of background documents already online that we're going to ask them to look at. And tomorrow, they will receive another email that has an agenda for that first meeting and kind of a layout of how things are going to go. So I know not everybody watches at home or sees, but check your inbox. We're also going to send a notice to all of these people, just in case they don't have to check their email in the next couple of days with that agenda tomorrow. We'll hand deliver it to their house. But this group, with their size and the amount of documents that are out there, we're going to try to stay digital because
I would like that, I would like to save.
It can get copying crazy real fast.
Exactly.
So again, thank you, and I look forward to this group. I think it's going to be fun.
It's been an interesting and rewarding process. And I really do thank those who were not chosen. But I promise we will have plenty of opportunities to include you, coming in other efforts going forward. Okay, the next item, consideration of the appointment of Commissioner Brett Scott as the City Commission liaison to the City of Pleasant Ridge Citizens Advisory Committee. Do I have a motion to approve?
Your Honor, I move the appointment of Commissioner Brett Scott as a City Commission liaison to the City of Pleasant Ridge Citizens Advisory Committee be approved as recommended.
Is there support?
A second.
And we have a vote?
Just say, quick word.
Yes.
Yes, no problem.
Okay, you're not backing out.
Right. Just very happy to be a part of this committee. When we first envisioned this exercise, this just seemed like a really good way to get a lot of feedback from residents on how we should run our budget process and on what ideas are truly important to the city as a whole. So I'm excited. And then when we looked through all of the applicants and the breadth of knowledge that all of the applicants brought to the process, the people that were chosen and the people that were not chosen, it's just amazing how much experience and knowledge exists in Pleasant Ridge. It's truly an enlightening experience to have read through all of that. And as the mayor and Scott have said, you know, our role in the process is not to shake the result, but more to be there for information, to be a liaison. So I'm a fly on the wall in the meeting, just to understand the process and to really just soak in what is being said during the process and to watch it form and watch the results come out of it. So looking forward to it.
Thank you. Did we get support? Yes. May we have a vote?
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuziak?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item is consideration of the appointment of Mayor Kurt Metzger as the city's delegate representative and acting city manager, Scott Petersak, as the city's alternate representative to the General Assembly Board of the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as part of our agreement with SEMCOG, the city must appoint a delegate and alternate to the General Assembly. And I recommend that the mayor and myself be appointed to those positions.
Excellent. Do I have a motion to approve?
Your Honor, I move that the appointments of Mayor Kurt Metzger as delegate and the acting city manager, Scott Petersak, as alternate to the General Assembly Board of the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, SEMCOG, be approved as recommended.
Is there support?
Second.
May we have a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuziak?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, consideration of the reappointment of Mr. Mark Bolach, Mr. Alex Lenko, and Mr. Kevin McCutcheon to the Pleasant Ridge Planning Commission Downtown Development Authority, term to expire December 31st, 2016.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Planning Commission and Downtown Development Authority have recommended the reappointment of the three gentlemen you just mentioned. And all their terms will expire on December 31st of 2016. And I concur with their recommendation.
Is there a motion to approve the appointments?
Your Honor, I move that the reappointment of Mr. Mark Bolach, Mr. Alex Lenko, and Mr. Kevin McCutcheon to the Pleasant Ridge Planning Commission and Downtown Development Authority, term to expire December 31st, 2016, be approved as recommended.
Is there support?
I support.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuziak?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes.
Motion carries. I just want to thank Mark, Alex, and Kevin for continuing. Now Kevin was a replacement, so he hasn't put in his three years and accepted another three. But the other two have been there for three years doing a great job and have been willing to put in another three. And so I thank them, and I'm sure Ryan will enjoy working with them going forward. So no, it's terrific when people volunteer and continue to do that work and show up every month and do the work in between. So we really do appreciate that. The next item is consideration of the reappointment of Ms. Diana Perino, Ms. Sue Turpak, and Ms. Amanda Wall to the Pleasant Ridge Recreation Commission, term to expire December 31st, 2016.
Yes, this is the same as the
Yes, it is.
Planning, the Recreation Commission has also agreed that those three people be reappointed. And they're all willing to do that, too. And they're all, they've all been on the commission for at least three years. They're involved, members of the Rec. Commission, so we're happy to definitely have them on board still.
Yes, we are. May I have a motion to approve?
Your Honor, I move that the reappointment of Ms. Diana Perino, Ms. Sue Turpak, and Ms. Amanda Wall to the Pleasant Ridge Recreation Commission, terms to expire December 31st, 2016, be approved as recommended.
Do I have support?
Second.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Kuziak?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes.
Motion carries. Yes.
Mayor, if I could, yes. Yes, I just wanted to say what a pleasure it's been to work with these three individuals over the last two years. They are truly hard-working volunteers who really make a lot of the volunteer efforts of the Recreation Commission successful. I know all three of these women have contributed individually to some really successful events over the last two years. And it's my pleasure to recommend their reappointment tonight.
I agree, and they did a wonderful job through the Recreation Plan, I must say. They were very much involved, and we came up with a tremendous plan. No money, but tremendous. Okay. The next item is consideration of the appointment of Ms. Jean Russell to the Pleasant Ridge Recreation Commission to fill an unexpired term, term to expire December 31st, 2014. This is the term picking up with Commissioner Foreman. So, did you want to say?
Yeah, just real quick, we had four applications that the Recreation Commission looked at, and we had a discussion at our meeting about it. It was exciting to have people, you know, willing to step forward and really want to be on the commission. And two of the people were there and made a statement. And I think we're going to try to create some additional volunteer opportunities for some people on the Recreation Commission, the people that want to help us. So I think that's nice to have people doing that. So after the Recreation Commission talked about it, we have recommended Ms. Jean Russell, who is in attendance tonight, and we're welcoming Jean, to be appointed to the Recreation Commission. She has a background at the Community Garden. She's a charter member of the garden, we'll say, and one of the first people there to sign up for her plot. And I'm excited to have Jean on board, so it'll be fun.
That's great. So now we're making all your work official, right? Now we're recognized. Can we have a motion to approve, please?
Mayor, I move the appointment of Ms. Jean Russell to the Pleasant Ridge Recreation Commission to fill an unexpired term, term to expire December 31st, 2014, be approved as recommended.
Is there support?
Second.
May we have a vote?
Commissioner Kuziak?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes.
Motion carries. Welcome, congratulations. I think they've just assigned you three committees, so the work begins now.
Mayor, I know one of the discussions at the meeting was her involvement with the Community Garden and the excitement that she could, you know, head a subcommittee on that. I know Scott has done a lot of that work over the past couple of years, but it'd be exciting to get a resident on that. And I'm excited to appoint a fellow Taurus. I know Jean and I share a birthday.
Fellow Taurus.
Actually, May 5th. So it'll be extra special this year. I look forward to celebrating.
Celebrating. Cinco de Mayo. That was not one of our stipulations for the CIC. We did not check into birthdays. Ages, but not birthdays, so.
Oh!
Demographic distribution, hey, come on. I wouldn't, what's wrong with that?
Nothing demographic for me, if you didn't know.
You want a distribution, you want young, you want old, right?
I'm proud to be a member of the senior groups.
There you go. So am I.
Not old, less young.
That's fine, huh?
Not old, less young.
That's right.
Less young.
Less young.
Yes.
The next item is consideration of establishing a public hearing and zoning board of appeals meeting on Tuesday, February 25th, 2014, at 6:00 P.M. Scott?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Of course, as you know, in the City of Pleasant Ridge, the City Commission is also the zoning board of appeals. And this will be the new commission as a whole, their first EVA that we look at established. But we have the owner of Ten Maywood has come forward and wishes, he has a plan to actually demolish the property that's on site right now and to rebuild a new house, a detached garage. And the building officials reviewing the plans for the thoroughness. But the homeowner is aware that there is a need for at least one setback variance, and that is a front yard setback. So he's going to request that from the City Commission. And I recommend that a public hearing be established for Tuesday, February 25th, at 6:00 P.M.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
Mayor, I move that a public hearing and zoning board of appeals meeting be established for Tuesday, February 25th, 2014, at 6:00 P.M., as recommended.
Is there support?
I support.
May we take the vote?
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuziak?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now we move on to the city manager's report.
Yes, well, Commissioner Kuziak kind of touched on some recreation things, so of course, I have to a little bit, too, because that's still my baby over there. So we have Daddy Daughter Dance, which is a great time. It ends up being kind of like the old-time high school dances where all the girls are at one time and the boys are at another. But all the dads are kind of over here talking about their sports or what they plan on doing over the weekend. And all the girls are kind of running wild more than dancing. But they have a great time, and it's definitely get out there. And you know, you don't have to, you could be uncle, grandfather, anything to come to the Daddy Daughter Dance, we're just looking to have you come out and have a good time. So on the subject of snow removal, I haven't spent enough time on this in the last couple of weeks. I just, you know, want everybody to know, you know, it's been a tough winter along, all across Michigan and all across, actually, the whole country. And I do want to thank Rodney and the Briarland team for the excellent job. It's kind of one of those thankless jobs. It's, you know, you're driving around in the truck, just pushing all this white stuff. And now we're at the point where we don't have anywhere else to put it. So it's just kind of piling up. And as we drive, you know, the snow finds the first open area that it can. And at this point, that's your driveway. So we're not on purpose plowing snow on your driveway, but that seems to be the place where it's going. And actually, I've probably heard from twenty or thirty residents that have called and thanked the plow truck driver for, you know, turning around and coming and helping him because he saw them out there struggling with it or stopping and trying to help clear someone's driveway. It's not a, you know, a regular occurrence, but if they see it and they're able to do it, they've tried it, so and they've done it. So I do appreciate all the work they've done. And it's, like I said, it's been difficult. So on to hopefully better news, the 2014 tax assessments for your property, they've been mailed. And you should be receiving those, if not today, within the next couple of days. So that's not a bill, that's just your assessment of what your 2014 to 2015 taxable value will be for the City of Pleasant Ridge. So make sure you keep your eye out for that. So along with that, the board review will also be meeting in March. If you have, if you want to come and appeal your taxable value, you're able to make an appointment for the board review. And any of those dates are
March 17th, 18th, and 19th.
Right, the 17th, 18th, and 19th of March for the board review. So we'll have some information out on that shortly. So next month, I plan to bring some exciting items to the City Commission for their approval and for them to be able to look at. And one of them is a social media policy that I've been working on for probably the last month now that will help us be able to start to increase our presence online through Facebook, through Twitter, through Nextdoor, through website, through E-Blast. We just kind of want to make sure that we're doing it the proper way, you know, as a governmental entity, we have certain things that we have to follow. So this policy will allow us to be able to do that and be able to become a greater presence on some of those sites. And along with that policy, there's a flow chart. So it shows like Facebook and says comment, positive, negative, what kind of comment. And it will tell exactly the staff or anybody who's responding to it that's, you know, part of the governmental unit of how the proper process for that should go. of the governmental unit of how, how the proper process for that should go. So, I'm excited to kind of get that going, so we can get some of these other, other sites that are out there that we know people, people hit. So, the, the second item that, actually the, the city clerk was in contact with the county, and we met with them yesterday, is an agreement like we approved tonight for the ballots, but to be able to accept online payments for taxes, which we can do right now, but also for water payments. So, people will be able to go on the website and be able to pay their water bill with their credit card. There is small fees that, that come along with that to be able to process those credit cards online, but that's something that we're looking forward to and be able to move into the, you know, 2014, pay your water bill at midnight if you want to, if you're, you're at night hour and you're sitting at your computer.
Scott, question, what's the cost to the city on that?
The cost, right now, to the city on that from our initial meeting is, is zero. So, the cost all goes through.
Goes to the resident?
Goes to the resident, yeah. They pay a fee, and actually, if you get to a certain amount of transactions, they start giving some money back to you based on how many transactions you're able to do over a period of time after you cover a certain amount. So, it actually could be a, I don't want to say a revenue generator, because it ends up being a small amount, but it's, it could be a nice, just a nice alternative for people to be able to pay their bill. So. And also on that same note, for kind of online presence is that we're starting to put the junior commission, which is Recreation Commission Historical, Planning, DDA, there are minutes on the website. So, after those minutes are approved by the junior commission, we'll, we have those up on their respective sites. So, you can start looking for those if you want to see minutes from the junior commissions. We're, we're trying to approve that website daily, and now we're able to do, I've learned how to do a lot of updates in-house, so we can, we can get things up there pretty quick. So, it's, it's exciting as we move forward with that, too.
So, with doing the online payments for water and different things, are, are you guys considering any way of doing like credit card payments for recreation things also?
Yeah, that's the other, that's the last piece of the puzzle that we, we have to look at, because we're on a totally different computer system than what City Hall is for their, their things. And we have a number of different people that are taking money at the counter. There is, there is a process we're looking at through our software company there, where we'll be able to run it right through the software program. It's just, it works a little bit different. If somebody wanted to, to pay for something with their credit card, they could come here to the City Hall, and we could swipe their card and just make sure that we get them signed up and give them a receipt.
Okay.
That they could take over to the community center in the meantime. But, it's just the two different systems and the two different sites. We're, we're working on it to be able to have enough transactions to make it worthwhile to do them over there. So.
Oh, great.
Eventually, we, we will be at that point. But, people, I know people like to pay their swim team registrations and things like that online. So, or not necessarily online, but with the cards. I think that's something we'll be able to hopefully implement here within the next few months.
Now, they can do it now, or they can't? Like, they can't come to the City Hall?
They can come to City Hall, they can come to City Hall right now and pay, and pay with their credit card. But, the process even in City Hall is going to change, because we're going to go with all to this one processor. Right now, we use
Okay, great.
You know, one of the regular machines, and, and we're actually, there is no service fee on it right now, because we were charging one, and then we weren't really getting any, any cards that were coming in. So, we thought, well, let's try it without the fee and see how many. We still don't get too many people coming and pay. But, when we change over to this agreement, there'll be, there will be that service charge that is automatically applied when somebody swipes their card. So, that way, there's no cost to us. Right now, we'll, the city would pay some of those costs for.
And will it include a historical view? Meaning, I know that in other cities, some other cities, you will be able to see your payment history or your tax history.
It, it will not. That is a, that is a different system that we're actually looking at right now with BSNA, which is our software.
Right.
This, this
Got it.
Online payment doesn't have a backend, so if somebody's going to pay their water bill, they have to put in their information, actually put in how much they're going to pay to, to create a backend loop with, with what the water and the tax system is, is the expenses very high, more than what we would
For sure.
Think was, is worthwhile at this point. So, eventually, we, we are looking at one of the seeds, so somebody can go online and type in their tax parcel ID number and be able to get their tax ID, ID number. It's just a matter of setting that up with BSNA and buying the seed for that. Right now, you can go on the county website and do that. I think you pay a dollar to be able to do that. Most people see they have to pay the dollar and, and call us and ask for the information. So, we will, we will get that form, it's just, we have a process at City Hall, we have for, for giving them that information.
Right. Thank you.
Yep, and that's all.
Great. I just wanted to reiterate that I would put our streets up against any other city. I might not put our public sidewalks up against any. I know that was, and I saw Rodney out there suffering, but, but the streets, it was wonderful.
Really?
Forget, I will shovel my driveway out many times, and I've got my streets clear.
I remember one morning I could see pavement on, in Pleasant Ridge and could barely move on Woodward.
Yeah.
It's that good.
It is, it is remarkable, but they can do a short amount of time, so.
Yep. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Other business. Open up, go ahead.
Yeah, Mayor, I just want to continue the, the efforts at establishing the book club. We had a good meeting last month. We had some recommendations by several residents on some really exciting books for the upcoming year. I know we have been focusing on nonfiction titles, but we thought about incorporating some works of fiction over the next couple of months. The book we'll be discussing next week, actually, February 19th, Wednesday, is a graphic novel written by Congressman John Lewis, and it is an account of his awakening as a young man and the dawning of the civil rights era. It's very interesting to see how his development from a bystander to a participant in some very historical and important dates in our nation's history. It's beautifully illustrated, and it was a very enjoyable read, although the subject matter obviously was very difficult. But, it comes, I highly recommend it, and if you would like to discuss this book, we'll be meeting next Wednesday, February 19th, at 7:30 P.M. at the community center. Now, this is the same day that we'll be going to Lansing for our own bout of citizen engagement. And I look forward to participating in that. And I want to reiterate my offer. If anybody needs a ride, I, I got a few seats open, although my focus is, is kind of tiny, and I'm a big guy already, so. But, anyone's more than welcome to join us for that, and I will hightail it back in a safe manner for this book club at 7:30 P.M. And that's all I have. Mayor, thank you.
Jay?
No, thank you.
All right, I've got just a couple of things just to mention. Last night had, we talked about public transit and found that there are a lot of people that are very interested in public transit, and we had a meeting last night at Pork, the mayors of Pleasant Ridge, Ferndale, Berkeley, Huntington Woods, and Royal Oak, and talking about how we want to get more engaged, how we want to get to the RTA people that are Oakland representatives that are not exactly pro-regional transit. And we've, we've decided that there are a number of reasons that we want to start meeting on a regular basis, just the five of us, at least as a start. There's been the South Oakland Five, that's been kind of an effort that city managers have done, and the mayors have never really participated in that. So, now the mayors have decided we're going to start meeting, too. We had a wonderful time last night. We get along really well, and in fact, the mayor of Royal Oaks' daughter is getting married around Dream Cruise time, and he asked the mayor of Berkeley to do the ceremony. So, so that's how close we're getting. But, it was, so it was really nice to start talking about, from the mayor's side of things, even though we're not the administrators, but start thinking about visions and how we want to start working together. The other thing that I decided that needed to be done at the end of every meeting is to kind of let people know about other meetings. Jay talked about a lot of the meetings for the schools, but I also want to remind people that the CAC, the first meeting of the CAC, hello there, kitty, is Thursday, this Thursday, and the second meeting will be February 27th. So, seven o'clock both evenings at Four Ridge. On February 24th, the Planning Commission DDA has their regular meeting. On February 25th, we will have the ZBA meeting at 6:00, but we will have a coffee with commissioners at 7:00 at Four Ridge. The last coffee with commissioners didn't make it. The weather was terrible, but we had a meeting that went much longer than we had anticipated. And so, the four, four stalwarts that showed up, I think, at Four Ridge were, hopefully they had cookies and left somewhat disappointed, but a little bit full. And on February 26th, the Recreation Committee meets, and March 5th, the Historical Commission meets, and finally, March 11th will be the next commission meeting. Is there anything else? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? Is there support?
Yes.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
We are adjourned.